Ready to go. We'll call the order at the December 6th meeting of the City Council. Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge and munitions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its form.
Call the votes, please.
Mr. Fritsch?
Present.
Mr. Mr. Shire had previously informed us he would be absent. Mrs. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Here.
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Some of those from the November 15th.
I'll vote the minutes.
I will second it.
Call the vote, please.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Obstand.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed three one.
Correspondents, Diane, you want to start this off?
Sure. Excuse me. I had some contact from the Friends of the Library and the library annex is on its last days. I guess we're looking at in January if possible to raise the building. They're going to have one last day to pick up books this coming Saturday from nine to three. Bring a box with you and you can pick up whatever books you want. And if you want to give a donation, you can, but if you can't afford it or don't want to, you don't even have to do that. They would like to get as many of the books that are left to new homes. And let's see, we're I've been asked by the Housing Authority, Rock Lake Manor Board to inform the City Council that we got our Public Housing Assessment System Score Report. And our designation status came out as being a high performer. So things are going well at Rock Lake Manor. And our current management is doing a fine job. And our residents there are very active. They're now planning a Christmas dinner and a New Year's party. And they're getting karaoke for the New Year's Eve party. So they're a nice lively group of people. And let's see here. Just wanted to remind everybody that there is the meeting tomorrow night here. It's in this is it in here or downstairs for the water?
Here.
Here in this room?
No, downstairs.
No, downstairs. Okay. At 6:30 for if you have questions about the lead and maybe Steve will have more to say about that. Also, the Fire Department has their open house next Tuesday, December 13th at 6:30. And Main Street would like to have me mention that we have the Winter Market and the Farmers Market on Saturday, this Saturday, at the middle school from nine to three. We have over 100 vendors at that site. And so we're excited about that. Want to mention for everybody, if you haven't noticed, there is a new Christmas tree in the park downtown. It's right near the shelter, the Lion Shelter. And that is a new tree that Rob Getz and the Parks Department purchased and planted. And it will keep growing. It's kind of on the little side right now, but trees start little and grow. And WPPI donated the lights for the tree. So just wanted the community to know that our electric utility was doing some nice community service to give us the lights on there. And Santa enjoyed it on Friday night when the Chamber had their Santa visit down there. So let's see. I think that's pretty much it. So there you go.
All righty. Mike?
I've got nothing else to add.
I had something for the parks and took care of it. Other than that, it was quiet.
It was quiet on my front, too.
In your place?
Yep, I don't have anything.
Nothing? All righty. Questions and public comment? Public's encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Let's see, item is the subject of a public hearing. If your comments pertain to a public hearing, you're asked to hold your comments until the hearing. Public comments may else be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda. If you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. State's open meeting law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes. State your name and address when starting and fill out the sheet. Anyone have a form? Seeing none, City Manager's report? Steve?
I have nothing.
Ivan Blank, yeah, that's intentional?
Yeah, unless you have questions.
All right, moving on. We got minutes from the Library Board, October 17th, Housing Authority, October 25th, and the Joint Rock Lake Committee from October 4th. All of this year, those minutes will go on record as written. Tavern operators license. Unless there's objection, read all the names at once.
Yeah.
Can we read all those names, please?
Yes. We have tavern operators license applications for Michael Mosher, Kia Rice, Christina Bilski, Carlin Bryan, Gary Walters, Jennifer Blank, and Jeffrey Wozak.
We have a motion to grant tavern licenses to E7?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
And call the vote, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Union contract, motion 161211. Can we have that read, please?
Motion 16-12-1-1, authorizing the City Manager to execute an agreement between the City of Lake Mills and the Wisconsin Professional Police Association. Be it moved by the City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, as follows. Section one, that the new collective bargaining agreement between the City of Lake Mills and Wisconsin Professional Police Association, contract dated January 1, 2017 through December 31, 2018, copies of which are attached hereto and made apart hereof, is hereby ratified. Section two, that the City Manager is authorized to execute said collective bargaining agreement and to take such actions as necessary to implement and administer said collective bargaining agreement. The City Council does hereby approve the new collective bargaining agreement, authorizes the City Manager to execute said agreement, and authorize the Council President to sign the motion.
We have a motion to adopt 161211.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Steve, anything on the contract?
Pretty minimal. Agreed to the pay raises that we had in the contract. Made some adjustments to comp time and clothing allowance. And that's pretty much covers the whole contract.
I was just trying to understand the numbers that are in the tentative agreement. Are those is that monthly or is that weekly? Or is that just kind of curious what those numbers are? Is that?
Like patrol officer 12 months?
Yeah. What does that dollar figure represent?
I think it's monthly.
That's monthly. Okay.
And it's it's.
That would scare me, yeah.
You have to you have to do a lot of there are a lot of issues in the police contract. First of all, they're salaried, except they get overtime.
That's very interesting.
They work 2,008 hours, but they work eight and quarter hours a day. So, you know, if you if you were talking to me and you asked me how many hours I was required to work, I'm required to work 2,080. Police are 2,008.
Okay.
But they work seven on, seven off. They, you know, they're whatever the schedule is. And so it's it's all a little bit different and.
Yeah, whoops, I don't see those numbers as off base at all. I just wanted to make sure that that's what I was.
Because it didn't actually say.
Right.
Monthly.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that's what it meant. So that's it.
Any other questions? There are motions, second. Call the vote, please.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Motion 161212, Brewster Drive. Can we have that read, please?
Motion 16-12-1-2, with reference to Brewster Drive design. Whereas the City Council of the City of Lake Mills pursuant to authority conferred by statutes of the state of Wisconsin has established certain standards and procedures for boards, commissions, and committees. And whereas the Public Works Board has worked with staff and neighborhood input to recommend the design of Brewster Drive as set forth in the attached plan. And whereas the Public Works Board in working with staff and neighborhood has determined that the design of Brewster Drive shall not include a traffic island at the intersection of Brewster Drive and Tyrenina Park Road. And whereas the City Manager and staff have reviewed the proposed recommendation. And whereas the Public Works Board has reviewed the planning issues related to the street design and recommended not installing a traffic island at the intersection of Brewster Drive and Tyrenina Park Road. And whereas the City Council has reviewed the information submitted and has considered the information regarding the subject. Be it therefore moved the sixth day of December 2016 by the City of Lake Mills Council that the City Council of Lake Mills does hereby authorize the City Manager to take actions necessary to design, prepare bidding documents, and receive bids for Brewster Drive rebuild as recommended by the Public Works Board. The City Council does hereby authorize the Council President to sign the motion.
And we have a motion to adopt 161212.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
And then with all the options there, we don't have to include one, correct? It's that's already done.
Actually, all six of those motions were reviewed. They did test one, which I think was option number two. But after about a month of testing, they decided not to do any of the six options presented. There is going to be some change. The throat to the intersection will be narrowed down a little bit. And several of the trees on the west side of the intersection will be removed to improve visibility. But other than that, as far as the design, it's pretty minimal.
We did a survey. When people responded to it with the temporary layout. And we got it all over the map. But there seemed to be a feeling leave it pretty much leave it alone, though. It didn't. We were trying to take and decelerate a lot of the people entering Brewster and so on, coming off of Tyrenina, which was the purpose of it. But might ultimately cause the way it was designed, some problems itself. So.
We did notice a lot of cones laying on their side. Just every day I can find it was different cones laying there.
I tried it myself. You used to have to slow down, but.
Which was the goal. The the intersection is not a safe design as it's currently designed. That being said, there haven't been there haven't been any substantial accidents there that I know of. And so it was, do we design it for future or do we just leave it as is and wait and see what happens?
Yeah, I know, coming down Tyrenina, you're always worried if that person coming out of that intersection was actually going to see you. And been here, what, 14 years? I haven't seen anything yet. So.
Actually, the the worst part of the intersection is where Gladstone ties in because it's so close to that intersection that there's no so those people are turning out and people coming down Tyrenina turning onto Brewster, they don't slow down. They're still going about 30, 35 miles an hour. And they come around that intersection, they're not looking for the people pulling out of that intersection. But like he said, there's not been any accidents there. So I guess our position is is that we'll wait until someone gets injured at the intersection before we make the improvement.
Hope it doesn't go that far.
Which is a typical way that we do it by warrant. It's not uncommon. So so.
Well, it could be that the people living on Gladstone choose not to go out that way.
And that's I don't see a lot of traffic coming out that way. I use that intersection a lot.
Well, but if you're if you think it's dangerous, you wouldn't go that way.
Right. Well, it depends.
I have a question. Yeah. When is it? When are we looking at removing those trees that need to be removed?
Next summer.
Okay. And that's good. I think that's the biggest problem there is the trees. I mean, I love trees, but not when they're in line of sight.
And that's what you were talking about?
Yeah.
That's what kills your line.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Call the vote, please.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Resolution 1651 Cemetery Fund Transfer. Can we have that read, please?
Resolution 16-51, authorizing the City Manager to direct the Treasurer/Finance Director to transfer funds for health insurance. Whereas the City of Lake Mills City Council adopted the 2016 general government budget by ordinance 1154. Whereas the adopted 2016 general government budget may only be amended by vote of the City Council as provided for under section 65.90 subsection 5A of Wisconsin statutes. And whereas the City Treasurer has requested that the 2016 general government budget be amended by transferring funds from forestry service contracts, facility maintenance, water and gas, and facility maintenance, building maintenance, to cemetery health insurance. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Lake Mills that the general government budget of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, for the calendar year beginning January 1, 2016, is hereby amended as follows. General fund forestry service contracts, the adopted amount was 8,800. The amended is 5,800. Facility maintenance, water and gas, the adopted amount was 90,200. The amended amount is 80,200. Facility maintenance, building maintenance, the adopted amount was 36,600. The amended amount is $30,574. General fund cemetery health insurance, the adopted amount was zero. The amended amount is $19,026. Be it further resolved that the City Clerk is hereby directed to give required notice to the public in accordance with section 65.905A of Wisconsin statutes by publishing said adopted resolution. Be it further resolved that the City Council does hereby authorize the Council President to sign this resolution.
And your motion adopt 1651?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
There's anything? We're going to talk to you a lot, by the way.
Yes, there are several that would pertain to me. In this situation, the the budget originally had no health insurance because the employee in that department had not taken health insurance previously. So there was no need to consider putting any item in there. After the budget for 2016 was approved, that's when he applied for the insurance, received the insurance, and it was too late to put it into the budget and make any changes. So we're asking you to to move the funds around. The Parks Director found where there was some room that he could move some funds into that into that line item. And he found $19,026, which is the full family premium for one year.
And just out of curiosity, maintenance suffer any because of it? I mean, $10,000 out of.
We're we're pretty far into the the budget year now where he's comfortable pulling that out.
Saying it's okay.
Yeah, yeah, he's he's pretty comfortable. Yeah, there is time left for things to happen and come up. We realize that, but we had to find it somewhere.
Well, what would happen if we left that as unfunded? Not saying we would, but I'm just kind of curious.
It's it's.
The auditor would require you to find a place to fund it from.
They would require us to do it anyway. Okay. Yeah, because that was one of the options to leave his unfunded line number. I was just kind of curious what it would do.
Yeah.
Didn't know what it would do.
This is generally what we do in December. We go through and find out all the places we over expended in the play areas where we under expended and move them to cover each one so that the auditor says the council knew that we spent funds here and not here. And it's basically just an audit trail to make sure you guys know what's happening.
Okay.
And for next year, it will be in the budget?
Yes, it's already in the budget for next year. That doesn't mean that he could drop he could drop it.
Right.
I mean, you can change your insurance at any time.
There are situations where you can at any time.
We would have to adjust. So I mean, these are kind of unusual situations.
All right. Anything else? Call the vote, please.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Resolution passed four zero.
1652 Snow Patrol Truck. Can we have that read, please?
Resolution 1652, authorizing the City Manager to direct the Treasurer/Finance Director to transfer funds for Snow Patrol Truck. Whereas the City of Lake Mills City Council adopted the 2016 capital budget by ordinance 1155. Whereas the adopted 2016 capital budget may only be amended by vote of the City Council as provided for under section 65.905A of Wisconsin statutes. Whereas the City Treasurer has requested that the 2016 capital budget be amended by transferring funds from unreserved fund balance to street capital fund. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Lake Mills that the capital budget of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, for calendar year beginning January 1, 2016, is hereby amended as follows. General fund unreserved fund balance, the adopted amount was 2,400,000. The amended amount is 2,322,000. Capital fund expenditures, street department truck, the adopted amount was zero. The amended amount is 78,000. Be it further resolved that the City Clerk is hereby directed to give required notice to the public in accordance with section 65.905A of Wisconsin statutes by publishing said adopted resolution. Be it further resolved that the City Council does hereby authorize the Council President to sign this resolution.
And a motion to approve 1652?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
And then questions?
Did we take delivery of that already?
Not that I know.
No, we haven't yet.
I think it'll be coming close, probably right at the end of the year.
Okay.
But they wanted their money before the end of the year.
Okay.
What kind of truck is it again?
It's the single axle dump truck that we use for snow plowing. It's the one we bought from the that we agreed to buy from the county for $8,000.
Oh, okay.
More questions? Call the vote, please.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero, four zero.
1653 Code Updates. Can we have that read, please?
Resolution 16-53, authorizing the City Manager to direct the Treasurer to transfer funds code updates. Whereas the City of Lake Mills City Council adopted the 2016 capital budget by ordinance 1155. And whereas the adopted 2016 capital budget may only be amended by vote of the City Council as provided for under section 65.905A of Wisconsin statutes. And whereas the Treasurer/Finance Director has requested that the 2016 capital budget be amended by transferring funds from capital website to local government investment pool account number 15. Whereas the Treasurer/Finance Director requests to have these funds available for the municipal code update that will be completed in 2017. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Lake Mills that the annual capital budget of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, for calendar year beginning January 1, 2016, is hereby amended as follows. Capital fund expenditures, website, the adopted amount was 16,000. The amended amount is 10,115. The LGIP account number 15, the adopted amount was zero. The amended amount is $5,885. Be it further resolved that the City Clerk is hereby directed to give required notice to the public in accordance with section 65.905A of Wisconsin statutes by publishing said adopted resolution. Be it further resolved that the City Council does hereby authorize the Council President to sign the resolution.
And a motion to adopt 1653?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
And questions?
This is just holding it till we can use it. So.
Right, right. The project isn't complete and we need to complete it next year and we need the funds to pay for it.
Yep.
Call the vote, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Passed four zero.
Resolution 1654, Rock Lake Activity Center. Can we have that read, please?
Resolution 16-54, authorizing the City Manager to direct the Treasurer/Finance Director to transfer funds for Rock Lake Activity Center building evaluation. Whereas the City of Lake Mills City Council adopted the 2016 general government budget by ordinance 1154. Whereas the adopted 2016 general government budget may only be amended by vote of the City Council as provided for under section 65.905A of Wisconsin statutes. And whereas the City Treasurer has requested that the 2016 general government budget be amended by transferring funds from City Council contingency to planning and engineering services. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Lake Mills that the general government budget of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, for the calendar year beginning January 1, 2016, is hereby amended as follows. The City Council contingency, the adopted amount was 6,500. The amended amount is 1,100. Planning and engineering services, the adopted amount was 46,000. The amended amount is 51,400. Be it further resolved that the City Clerk is hereby directed to give required notice to the public in accordance with section 65.905A of Wisconsin statutes by publishing said adopted resolution. Be it further resolved that the City Council does hereby authorize the Council President to sign this resolution.
And a motion to adopt 1654?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Thanks. And this is, I think.
This is for the community center.
Right. And we have we approved doing all this work, correct? And that was?
You approved to fund the work that they did out of this account.
Yes.
And Mr. Foster and Mr. Fritsch were there. They were involved in the decision to authorize this work as well as the next piece of work. This one came out of this year's fund account and and was done on a quick timeline. So you you see the report there attached. The other one hasn't been authorized yet. They won't be authorized until after the new year.
Yeah, so if the folks at home are wondering why we're using city money to look at a private entity or to evaluate it, it's we're looking at a possibility of building a community center in Lake Mills, something that will benefit everybody in the community. So that's that's where this money's going to. And we're just seeing if the Rock Lake facility would suit the needs of our community for what we need now and for what we need in the future. So we're not giving money to a private entity. We're we're actually doing it as a study. So.
Questions and yes? Call the vote, please.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
And resolution 1655, space needs assessment. Can we have that read, please?
Resolution 16-55, authorizing the City Manager to direct the Treasurer to transfer funds from City Council contingency fund. Whereas the City of Lake Mills City Council adopted the 2017 annual general government budget by ordinance 1171A. And whereas the adopted 2017 annual general government budget may be only amended by vote of the City Council as provided for under section 65.905A of Wisconsin statutes. And whereas the Treasurer/Finance Director has requested that the 2017 general government budget be amended by transferring funds from City Council contingency funds to planning and engineering services. Whereas the Treasurer/Finance Director requests to have these funds available for the space needs study for the multi-use building in 2017. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Lake Mills that the annual general government budget of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, for the calendar year beginning January 1, 2017, is hereby amended as follows. City Council contingency, the adopted amount was 18,000. The amended amount is 7,200. Planning and engineering services, the adopted amount was 47,000. The amended amount is 57,800. Be it further resolved that the City Clerk is hereby directed to give required notice to the public in accordance with section 65.905A of Wisconsin statutes by publishing said adopted resolution. Be it further resolved that the City Council does hereby authorize the Council President to sign this resolution.
And a motion to adopt 1655?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
And comments? Do you have any on this one?
No, not really. It's more of the same to see whether or not it's going to fulfill our needs as a community and whether or not we should be looking at it at all, whether we should be going somewhere else or whether or not we really will come up with a community center.
I think one of the things that was beneficial about the old St. Paul's Elementary School was current Rock Lake Activity Center was its closeness to downtown. So it filled our city policy of trying to place make as much close to the downtown area as possible to make it a place where people want to come and. as possible to make it a place where people want to come and be.
Yeah, easy to get to.
But, so now we've determined that the building does have some usefulness, then it's, will it fulfill our space needs? Because if it doesn't fulfill the space needs, then we need to evaluate whether we want to cut it down to keeping it in the down, as close to the downtown area as possible or being willing to move outside that, so.
What kind of timeline are we looking at for this to be completed?
I'm not exactly sure because it's kind of up to the committee as they meet and they continue to whittle with that, that consultant. But I, I'm assuming that maybe three months.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it was in there, it would be done by March.
That's a, that's a goal.
Yeah, a goal.
I think the committee is taking a trip next Wednesday. They will be going to Wannakee while I'm going to Madison.
In the building in Wannakee, was there?
Their community center.
Their, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. All right, anything else on, call the vote, please?
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Uh, resolution sixteen fifty-six, tree replacement. Can we have that read, please?
Resolution sixteen fifty-six, authorizing the city manager to direct the treasurer or finance director to transfer funds for South Main Street tree replacements. Whereas the City of Lake Mills City Council adopted the 2017 capital budget by ordinance eleven seventy-two B. Whereas the adopted 2017 capital budget may only be amended by vote of the city council as provided for under section sixty-five point nine zero five A of Wisconsin statutes. And whereas the city treasurer has requested that the 2017 capital budget be amended by transferring funds from unreserved fund balance to Parks and Forestry Capital Trees. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the City of Lake Mills that the capital budget of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin for the calendar year beginning January one, 2017 is hereby amended as follows. General fund, unreserved fund balance. The unreserved fund balance adopted amount was two million four hundred thousand. The amended amount is two million three hundred eighty-five thousand. Capital fund expenditures, Parks and Forestry Capital, South Main Street Trees. The adopted amount was zero. The amended amount is fifteen thousand. Be it further resolved that the city clerk is hereby directed to give required notice to the public in accordance with section sixty-five point nine zero five A of Wisconsin statutes by publishing said adopted resolution. Be it further resolved that the city council does hereby authorize the council president to sign this resolution.
And a motion to adopt sixteen fifty-six?
So moved.
Second?
So second.
And questions or comments on this one?
Yeah, no, I assume that these trees that we're putting in are trees that will not be affected by the road going in.
Trees that we are putting in and replacing at this point in time are trees that are going in the property's front yard. And Rob's making the special effort to avoid the sanitary sewer and the water service along with being far enough away from the sidewalk not to be affected by new construction.
Okay.
And that'll cover, this amount will cover everything?
For that year.
That year.
All right, anything else? Call the vote, please.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
And sixteen fifty-seven, boundary changes. Can we have that read, please?
Resolution sixteen dash fifty-seven, delegation of approval authority for functional classification and boundary changes in urban areas. Whereas a comprehensive functional classification system and boundary review is conducted across the state of Wisconsin after the decennial census update. And whereas the Wisconsin Department of Transportation, Bureau of Planning and Economic Development, and Division of Transportation System Development conducts, conducts the functional classification and boundary review with the cooperation of municipal stakeholders. And whereas the municipal stakeholder provides a qualified individual to review proposed functional classification and boundary changes. And whereas in accordance with federal regulations set forth by the Federal Highway Administration under twenty-three CFR four seventy point one oh three and four seventy point one oh five, proposed changes to the functional classification system need to be approved by a city council or village board. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of, the Lake Mills City Council is responsible for approving proposed functional classification and boundary changes. Be it further resolved, the city council may delegate approval authority for functional classification and boundaries to a qualified individual by position title. And be it further resolved, the city council delegates the functional classification and boundary approval authority to the city manager. And be it further resolved, the delegation of the functional classification and boundary approval authority to the individual possessing the job title of city manager must be adopted by the city council. And be it further resolved, after approval of a change to functional classification and boundary by delegate, the approver must notify the city council of the approved change. And the council's acknowledgement of the change must be reflected in the meeting minutes. And be it further resolved, once the functional classification and boundary change proposal has been sent to the municipal stakeholder for review and discussion, the reviewer must abide by the timeframes for review of functional classification and boundary changes policy.
Do we have a motion to adopt sixteen fifty-seven?
So moved.
Second?
Second. Yeah, so this just came out this year.
Just came out.
Yeah. It's a little wordy.
It's real wordy.
I didn't write it.
It was written by, by the state.
Yeah.
And sent along with their documentation. But basically it's saying that any urban highways that they decide to change the classification on, you now have designated me the authority to make that determination of whether they're right or wrong.
But it doesn't give us any authority?
To review it.
Just to review it.
Unless I send it out real quick.
Yeah.
I'm still confused. What does this do?
It gives me the authority to make the determination on urban classifications.
And is this something that we need to do? I mean, is this valuable? Or is it just busy work?
Well, there are times, let's say, um, we were asked to change the urban classification on South Main Street earlier this year. And we opted not to. The council opted not to. That's basically saying that now I have the authority to make that designation.
So in other words, like changing it from a state highway to a county highway or?
No, it changes the classification from a federal funded highway to a state funded highway.
Oh.
Why would we? Why would we? Okay, is what you're saying, that if this passes, that it doesn't need to come to the council anymore? That it would be just something the city manager would do?
Basically what they're asking you to do, yep. The, the opposite effect is, is that if you don't do it, they're not giving you the time necessary to make the decision anyways.
Yeah, I see they have their timelines in there and.
Yeah, they basically gave you no option.
Right, we have, we have to notify the community that we're having a meeting on this and then we have to talk about it and.
I don't like this.
Yeah.
I figured you would.
Well, I, you know, I, as a council, this is a decision we should make, not, you know.
Yeah.
And if we have to call a special meeting, we call a special meeting. But I don't like giving this just carte blanche to, you know, person in your position. I wouldn't have a problem giving it to you because I know you know what you're doing. But it doesn't mean that everybody following you someday will know what they're doing. And then we might find out.
It's still in place.
Huh?
And then it's still in place, is what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I mean, I underst-
Are they trying to speed up the process?
Yes, they're definitely trying to speed up the process. I think they're trying to flake down the political activity related to the process.
So in other words, there aren't appeals and reviews and stuff like that?
Well, it's not gonna go to a council meeting and get discussed and then go to another council meeting and get discussed again. And then we're gonna, then we're gonna have a study done on what we think the right thing is to do and you've got a certain timeline. Now you could designate this authority to me and have me give it to you, but you're still under a timeline that's so narrow that your decision, your decision-making ability is severely limited.
Well, let's look at it this way. How often has, has this happened in, how long you been here, Steve?
Seventeen years.
How, how lo-, how many times has this happened in seventeen years?
Once. And we only, we only have a couple streets that follow into that, doesn't it?
Exactly, so if we did nothing, it may never occur again unless they try to do something with Main Street again.
Well, we probably will have to do something with North and down the road again.
What are you suggesting?
Because we didn't do the stuff under the street.
I'm suggesting that we say no to this. And leave the process as is or, you know, tell them we don't agree with them.
I think you would be better off saying yes to this and then requiring a process that the city manager give you a quick notification. Because otherwise I think you're not gonna get any notice.
Well, that's, I was gonna ask. Because we can approve this, doesn't mean it doesn't come to us if it doesn't come. You could have it come to us. You could at least give us notice and we'd get it.
Yeah, you could, you could reject this one and do another resolution that requires some level of council notification. But I'm, what I'm gonna tell you is, is that six of one half dozen of the other. I, I don't think it's in your best interest not to designate someone. It's probably better to designate someone and say, at least give us notice before you sign off.
Okay, can't we just, can't we add that to this?
Yes.
Well, I guess that, I'd like to make a motion and I don't know where we put it in this thing.
Yeah, but if you still do that, the person in that position still has that authority to do whatever they want. Whether they come to us or not. Because we've designated them as that person that can make that decision. So what's the, what is the state gonna say? They're gonna say, well, you designated that person. They made the.
Decision.
They made the decision. So we would really have no say so, even if he did come and tell us that, you know, he's doing this and we say no. He or she, whoever's in that position. So it, it sort of leaves our hands tied when it comes to this. We'd have no say so. Future councils wouldn't have no say so.
Well, what would you want to do with it?
I don't know.
I mean, we want to do something that says it has to, that we have to agree, right? That's what we want.
Yeah, but according to what they're giving us here.
That's not an option.
That's not an option, exactly.
In fact, I, I kind of laugh where it says be further resolved, after approval of a change to functional classification and boundary by the delegate.
Right.
The approver must notify the city council of the approved change.
Once it's done.
Once it's done.
Right. So to me, when do we have to do something on this?
I think by the end of the year. I'd have to go back and look.
Because I think this should be calls to our representatives.
Well, because let's say someday Steve leaves, we have a new city council, I mean, city manager who doesn't quite understand all the nuances yet.
Yeah.
And might think, oh, this is fine, that's okay, and we can do that. And, you know, that's not what we want.
Right, because it sounds like you're designating a position, not a person.
Correct.
And that could stay no matter what. You wouldn't have to change it each time that job changed. Is there any way we could table this and find out if we have to have the decision by the end of the year?
Yes. You have another meeting before the end of the year.
We do.
We have one more.
Right. Would you, would, I'd like to make the motion to table this to our.
Twenty? Do you want to put the date on it?
Yeah, the next meeting.
I think it's the twentieth, right?
Yes.
Well, can we also find out by that meeting if there is some way to alter this so that it does what we want it to do?
Yeah.
I mean, is that something Vicky could look into or is that?
It does allow you to set up a committee of experts.
Well, there we go.
And that's the designated party.
But they review it and then make a decision without going to city council.
Right. Well, could the city council be the designated expert?
I hope that. I would hope Vicky would be our designated expert.
At this point here, you want to make a motion to table till the twentieth?
I thought he did.
I did make the motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
And call the vote, please.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Yeah.
All questions go to, go to Vicky? Get that one answered before the twentieth? Hey, you're on your way off. All right, so this one's tabled. And ordinance eleven seventy-four, elementary school first reading. We need to read the, we have the whole thing, I believe?
Ordinance eleven seventy-four, amending Lake Mills Elementary School crossing zones, no parking areas, and stop sign placement. The city council of the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, does ordain as follows. Section one, section six dash two dash three stop sign placement of Title VI, Chapter II of the Lake Mills Municipal Code is amended by adding the following location for placing a stop sign. Birch Court at its intersection with Birch Street. Section two, section six dash two dash five, crossing, school crossing zones of Title VI, Chapter II of the Lake Mills Municipal Code is amended by adding the following. Birch Street and Birch Court, East Pine Street and Birch Street. Section three, section six two five, school crossing zones of Title VI, Chapter II of the Lake Mills Municipal Code is amended by deleting the following. Birch Street and East Prospect Street. Section four, section six three four, loading zones only of Title VI, Chapter three of the Lake Mills Municipal Code is amended by adding the following. Birch Street, West Side, and adjacent to Elementary School, where marked with official signs, no person may park a vehicle except to load or unload passengers, and no such vehicle may be left unattended at any time. Section five, section six three sixteen, school bus parking only of Title VI, Chapter three of the Lake Mills, Lake Mills Municipal Code is created as follows. Six dash three dash fifteen, school bus parking only zones. No vehicle other than a school bus may be parked at any time on the north side of East Prospect Street where official signs are erected, giving notice that the area is reserved for school bus parking only. Section six, this ordinance is sponsored by Council Representative Diane Hask Fritsch. Section seven, all ordinances are part of ordinances inconsistent with or contravening the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section eight, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and publication as provided by law.
And Diane?
Well, I'm going to pass this back to staff because I was gonna say, now, how long has it been that they've been working on this? It's been over two years?
A while.
Since the school reopened in the new site, right? So this is the final prod, this is the final product after much trying things out, right?
I hope so. The, the map that was included with your materials shows basically like a master plan of all of the signage in and around the school. But you'll notice that your ordinance eleven seventy-four only addresses some types of signage. And that is because under state statute, a number of these signs can be placed with the authority of the statute without having to have a separate ordinance that allows for it. So I went through each and every one of the types of signs and, um, determined whether we needed an ordinance or not. And the majority of them, we don't need an ordinance for. So I crossed them off my little master map and what I was left with was what I drafted the ordinance. So they will be putting up a lot more signs than what the ordinance calls for, but those are all signs that are already permitted under the state statute. So they will be putting up a lot more signs than what the ordinance calls for, but those are all signs that are already permitted under the state statutes. DOT worked with staff to determine where all of those fifteen mile per hour school zone signs are going to be and they, they were quite extensive, if you see from your map, there's a lot of them. And the, the state requires that we have signage ahead of time telling people that this zone is coming up and also sign at the end saying, now the zone is over. And, and this is all required by the state, but we don't need a specific ordinance for that, so that's why you don't see it in the ordinance.
I have a question, is the state involved only on the main street side or on all sides?
They provided recommendation on all sides because all signage is regulated in some form or fashion to the Uniform Code of Traffic Control Devices. So they, they helped us with the ones that were on our public streets and they did tell us on the state highway how we had to do it. But it's, it's consistent across the board on our streets, the same as the state highway, so it wasn't any different.
Other questions? Eleven seventy-four, go to the second reading. Recommendations for future agendas? At this time, then we need a motion to convene and to close session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eighty-five one C. Compensation and performance evaluation data of employees over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise responsibility.
Second?
Call the vote please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kurkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion pass four zero.